Okay, so I'd like to call to order the San Diego County Park and Recreation Day for today, August 13, 2025. So I'd like to have the pledgeings led by Nelda. Can I go, please?
Absolutely. Marie Peter, District One absent. Nell Esquia, District Two. Sarah Gonzalez, District Three is absent. Owen Miller, District Four.
Present.
Marie Spanley, Vet Art Commission.
Present.
And Pauline, his historical society representative. Okay, we have a corner.
Thank you. This time we do consentments and recitations. We add a scene because we have a special individual here that it's so much hard to get in here for recognition. And we call him a lot, so I call Mr. Lewis. Always again, and I wanted to make sure that he knows that we're hearted, so thankful for everything he has. I always tell him at the last meeting that it is to take five people to do your job, and I hope you never retire. And so I hope you're training ten people to do your job, because that's what we're gonna need if you ever die retired. And I don't want to wait until you retire to let you know how much I appreciate you. I don't want to wait till then to let you know that your heart is never, has none of this. So on that count, come, I'll come. This certificate recognition is presented to the basis as outstanding service as a crew supervisor San Diego County, but has performed a variety of state or councilman scout, the county park system for over for more than thirty years. Some of these milestones include construction after that Veterans War Park, construction of pig shelters at Memo Park, the construction of numerous bar cupits, the historical park, construction of the irrigation systems, installation of trees, the historical park, and overall maintenance of the utility systems at the key parks. Dedicate your dedication and contribution to the county public works department, the county park system, and the welling of the unity has been valuable. Thank you. Yes. So then we're going to have towards an agenda, Mr. Steve Public Works.
Is the first apartment announcement?
Yes, the apartment announcement. Okay, okay. So at this time, we're going to do public minutes. This is to just the commission either of just appearing agenda or not scheduled publicing. No act maybe can provide for by G C five six nine five four point two, each being limited by minutes. This committee does not hear matters regarding veterans park. And if they're linked on the end, they'd like to invite more agents to our commission.
If you would to come, please, a proposal. I don't need any chambers via Zoom, there's no comment.
Okay, so we're going to move the consentsims. Now we'll have this loop.
No, Syria, you just have to adopt certificates in the meeting at some level. It's on the agenda. You can adjourn as a whole. That would include the certificate a minute. If you have any amendments, minutes, let me know.
I need a motion to approve the consentsims. I'll leave her. Me opposed. Motion revoked.
Oh, now I can go.
I know I did. Because we have to.
Please, presentation to you. Good evening. Members of the book, SLU Puck Works Administrator, and we're going to go through update on park projects and frame on a couple of them toward the end. So start with the park. So there had a completion of a construction over at the park recently. The bathroom that remodeled near skateboard brick and the ground area, that bathroom has been completed. There's one inch less, I'm actually treating, so the A F Aids have installed, yes. That's a good thing. However, we're still working on the restroom across the street near the pick table shelter. And so we have completed the repairs and all that one partition, the bathrooms are reopened to the Puck. However, we have a little bit left on the project, so we're doing, still working on small repairs, we're getting improved lighting, and we're actually going to do some repeating as well, so we're trying to get a vote for that on this exced building over by the big table shelter. And we get a quote in two weeks, we should be able to complete that actual work in October. And jumping back to the park lines, if folks have been, have not been following any ditch discussions, there was essentially seven hundred eighty thousand dollars allocated to park line and resourcing improvements. And then, long story, the Puck's handled due to about three hundred fifty thousand dollars of upper money that was designated that project. It now plays second to the general plan. We had finished desire, hundred complete means we're about to bid for the project, but it's decided that a third project bid is going back into the general plan. So we're going to possibly just do resurfacing and the lighting, but trying to figure out how you probably got. So that's status of the park reseizing eight minutes for its Puck. Then I'll do the historical park, and I'll pause and ask if you'd mean to continue to the other. So historical park's design is, so working on the design plan for a new restaurant included showers at the historical park. And those plans were actually as complete as well, not just to the actual building structure and facade, but the plan could have the nine percent age of that new bathroom showers. And it was relocated, if familiar, in a dance hall, in a saloon, there was a dress play next dance, it's over cute there. So that was to go, but that whole seven hundred eighty thousand dollars was back in the federal funds for county budget balancing purposes. So that project put on hold. Couple of things ongoing. Um, we will be implementing this being expensive. So incorporating the historical park staff and meetings and vendors and basically, or just, I don't know, three or four thousand dollars here, we're coordinating an audio tour historical. So what that means is there's going to be three little beatings involved, different options. And then if someone has their cell phone, they scan the Q code, and they go to the bills, they're gonna get a hit of the building, and hit the background, how it got there. And basically, as you walk through the park with cell phone, of course, you'll just still have an audio tour of the park as you go through. Because we've all there, but they're pretty neat buildings and all kind of cool items that been geared by historical society and playing that park. And so it's a good meeting that we'll have to get to our supervisors for a role in September. But so we're pretty hurt to that, so nice fee for this school park. And one thing that's ongoing, we've had some removing, even in the past about being exced water system out there, we are where the consensus should permit, because we have to submit state and allocation to the water system, be it a park water system, because the state says that there are, we have the threshold of average amount of visitors to the park, and because of the amount of visitors, we have to submit our waters to be a public water system. So we have draft together, since draft documents to date, we still do a couple of middle, a some of the couple of documents. And once that is approved, next is to actually install a water treatment or filtration units that's gonna also test the solace. The water's hard in that area. At the point, the water is essentially potable, but it's not permitted to be a drinking water system yet. So we're putting on that filtration yet, also about the solid, we're gonna do some grades to pump. And there's a shed of pump, house of pumps, and so have to upgrade the pump itself, and we'll be in part tax for that as well. So that's completed, what that means is they'll go back and provide all the irrigation systems. And then the bubble water will be to use by folks at the park, which is necessary in the taker if he cares to use the bubble water system. So I can pause there and continue all the part dates if want, and ask when's at the end, would you like to do?
Questions?
Let's pause there, questions, and be public, I guess.
Okay, so my question is, so the up fence, we're allowed to do this, going into the general, are they not restricted?
So what happened unfortunately is last December, the, all the upfunds were essentially placed in the jet fund and pits. And that was into essentially, the ARP, apartment, as you say, the federal guy said, if you allocate funds to your funds and pocket things, you will lose every fund, so much every agency, the state did that, unfortunately. They were designated in the jet funds as, has been part of the historical park restrooms, and actually have pride codes in general. Unfortunately, they being part of the general funds, and so therefore, they be used for uses.
And also we're lost them.
We will, yeah.
So that said, safety is, I understand that, but safety, life is more important to memory service. Whole thing, all this shit was, was a living. We had seventy-five, how much is it hiding more in September? I think so.
No, so this is a great point, this, the commission provides some put staff. So if we were to do the lights, we'd use impact lines and install, and probably install solar line, because we moved back, we set solar come, make sure sufficiently in through the year, and to the two, about three hundred fifty thousand dollars, can use compact font, we have funds to do that. If you do, on solar, it might cost like two, four hundred thousand, and it'll take a little longer, but, but if they come in, you know, while you're here, if you'd like us just to focus on the lane, we do find, I get one of the resurfacing or the lane. The resurfacing is actually about seven hundred thousand, six fifty, seven hundred thousand, so that's even more than the light. The project be somewhere around a million dollars, so sketch purposes, we'll say seven thousand for the researching and four hundred thousand for the lane, before we can do both.
So I think that we need to bring back to the mission of the vets park, then we need to have this funding, because I don't want to decision on.
So we have the vets, sounds.
And yeah, that's something good I feel that.
All right. So that's good. So what can you want? Back to store park, and a good project is moving for, it's a little bit right now, hands are each, basically the K, three, and then it's available, where we see grant, or probably, I think it was two thousand dollars, and they can actually match that, I think it could be about two thousand dollars, maybe a little more, the total's roughly in ten thousand. Or a new shade shelter, M A D A grades, and a set to make core of the playground area, boys are friendly. And we actually before, well, the grant could have been, some new bitches, game cables, if that's what reached this to do. So I think for the last meeting with each, actually with meeting ago, they were looking to reach some contractors, and please start construction, enough. I'll just jump over to sunny park, which is over here, this hospital back, and kind of your migrant, sir. So as you're on side roads, union road, south roads, they say it could be on your inside. So we did install six foot fence on the park area for safety reasons, we did some parking funds for this park. Before the park, up where we go, the access were bad, though they warned us they were gonna actually cut fence a whole end. So we're installing eight vents for future fighter needs, firefighters to access park from different case that they can to where they need to go. So they get heads up, be ending where future eight would be all that fence. And so with gate and contractor, two weeks ago, so we're getting in the fence. And then those funds will bill, so the bids will go out of the park in September, and so get a bid, and just to refresh your memory, the park sunny side, states that the developer dedicated three point five acre to the county, we just a lane. And so we gather ones, now the ones still work, and so there'll be park there, and also be another park installed outside there. Last from little road, or Riverby State's area, so it's actually two part, we call sunny side because it's the general area that's gonna located the current estimate for that, one eight million. Four thousand of that be found by, but yeah, that's the plan done, we just need to get out to open this sooner.
The two part called as sunny side will be there?
Yeah, just call it sunny park, actually, the plans include two parts, so there's one sunny side states, three acres, and there's another across street. It's near a bridge, there's a plateau there, and the center just served the easters, that review of state neighborhood, yeah, exactly. And so they've had it a long time, though, but it takes a long time to accumulate park fees. Each home contributes about four thousand dollars, and takes a while, build those fees, and so they shut a park, but long story short, it go out to September, means we should construct spring, actually open start construction later this year, but really it'll run in spring, but that's a good. And then regional, just to recap, go through all these, and for a moment. That, like, oh, two years ago, just recap, and we'll go different sphere real quick, and kind of, they'll jump back. So oh, two years ago, we had a grid breaking for the phase of re-parks, is the upper right corner, it's about half of the ultimate parking lot. We had the place finished, we had the plans, the contract, the contractor, and we went on site, and our budgets said there's a lot of soul hole here, some things, and so we need to coordinate with Mission Mud Light. And there are my cylinders under here. So two years later, or two years later, we're still trying through some element issues, and just refresh a bit of memory from our meeting three months ago, this group. Where we're at is, if the county wanted to spend point two million dollars, we could start extraction S A E for the parking lot, it could bid the project over park, get things forward. But the county didn't even anticipate point two million of mediation costs for cylinder issues. Because according to U S National Service, they don't think their cylinders are near the park at all. However, the state, C W, do think there could be cylinders there, we didn't see any cylinder. So long story, we did allocate two and two million, which would be a big chunk funds that that were used for the park, so we have few options. The pain two point them, we spent about a hundred seventy thousand dollars this winter, we have a fence around the south side park, and we have these special butts that are actually flat the ground, and we just have any centers up in the bits during the season. If a cylinder's dry bucket this year, we spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollars next year, put a fan, first magic bucket in, with solid pill in the box, so they're, they drop lean in bucket. And hopefully cylinders drop in bucket next year, and if that's the case, then we can proceed, well, our third option, which is hopefully our best option at this point, is table, it's a couple of years ago, county staffer, our CO, we was there, eight, seven, John Led, who has worked a lot of environment agencies in Indian Falls, and he asked him to talk to the head of C W, and request that they consider their termination, there might be some under the park. And our J F A case for that is northeast part of re-park, I'll go to the diagram here, the northeast, right in east, there's a high school, the neighborhood, there's seats, there's houses, a bunch of things that cylinders don't like, and on the southwest side, there's a very wide river that, summer, it was dry, cylinders blank, deck of bed all. And it's flowing, flows pretty well, and they wanted to get a accessory for crying, because last summer, their sign was seven years ago, and it one point two miles away to the west, and there's one scene, and the next scene was nineteen years ago, one point two miles to the west. So there are only two scenes, unfortunately, one point miles fall within T D F criteria of elements, it's about a half, and within about a half, there might elements on your way. So, long short, we reached out to the state center, it's gonna meet with T D W, Sacramento, soon as ten, so to speak. And just some to consider whether or not cylinders apart, you haven't seen it. And top of the survey note, case folks that care about readers, because we, even if the everybody's, there's no cylinder, during construction, we have a biologist out there. He literally is poles, is this scope thing, and all those holes, literally, to make sure there's no cylinder evidence, so that's one. Number two, during all the activity, you have a biologist on board, and that biologist also, during all the grain activities, usually maybe the first ten percent project, and they have a bunch of drone thing. We have a biologist on ice, there's any elements, and they stop, work it away. So protocol, there's a few I don't want both, but even guards, he would be sensitive to some under, so. Okay, so we get some phase weapon lot, like I mentioned, immediately, because literally I have a contact, we haven't contacted our next person for a couple of years, I read out to my months ago, and I said, still want to build breaking lot, said yeah, which is a thing, they asked for slight price increase, I don't at this point, was to get our permit, our cylinder permit first up. And then once the permit, phase two, we go out to bid, and bid, our project, which I'll talk in a second, then phase three, the park, we don't have fund yet. So phase three is the yellow light kind of items, it's the second of the park lot, extra red rooms, it can sustain for pop off fields, a theater, and for the right. So including landscape near a game, which we threw out the last touch, I'll mention in a minute. So essentially, we go half part, all the, most of the good fun things, we can bid right away, because we two point four million grant, and we have three point six million dollars of imp fund, and so six millions or must to be body playing, and do that where we're our cylinder parts. The other thing we talked about, which we'll talk about in a minute, is landscaping, trees, irrigation, and so probably reaching out to the community, and researches, and any that wanna contribute to, to please. I think the creative ways, we don't go into any details tonight, but some creative ways to have folks to treat, and I don't know, put plaque around areas and things like that. Yeah, so I think we can get there. And then we're told plant grants, actually a plant just so everybody knows, for an E B grant, the fuss, all remaining things, but unfortunately, E B grant had the words sustainability and disavert communities in rant hurting, so that rant has been on by the federal government, so it is, but we're there. And so you say it's through the commanders first, and I'll jump to final park, they want a park, history remembers, you're driving Union Road, and you're to head out twenty six, if you to left, and go down, I want to drive. Probably late fall, early spring, sir, see a little parking lot trail, and kind of set up to kind of a knee, better get after the air, we could pop us, have some events, and I need the committee's exhibit for how we want to actually utilize that air truly, once it's closer to reality, but it's, I think it holds ten, twelve pops, and it'd be a fun, yes, we'll see what the commission like to use, how I'd like to use, utilize it. Again, if you must, I'm actually really bet that out, but something for the commission to think of, so. And then another, I could drive down, I want extra, maybe half a mile on your hand, will be a large dog park, a small dog park, a little farrier, and a community garden, in which we're all gonna have a review park, so lots of community gardens in the county. Fortunately, we do have the homeowners, this development, they paid into C F fund, which will fund mains of the parks. So Loop Bay doesn't get overowned, and again, you know, this is the thing, because you guys see the park, and you examine our tech, but fortunately, it's funded by the owners of San Joe, thank goodness. So, because a lot, a lot of extra things remaining, and I'm talking, you know, some, and then for this, I shouldn't think about how we want to utilize the new garden. Typically, they're linked to entities, we can do that, can have individuals, we can groups with different plant threads. So fun to think about, be found, maybe next, I mean, those, this is going out to now, so probably really will go online, like, sometimes, definitely. On the fun out, for the last meeting, and nation this group, county had reached out to clerk to put together an agenda item for add a committee. The clerk's all deciding, it has to be by the board or not, but either way, they'll come online, probably come in September, and if I remember correctly, it was gonna be Maria Angelina Miller as the two heads of the committee. And then I think you two men, maybe to note to the tribe, survive, or reach, or some folks, that'll be your vision, one committee active, if someone remind you of that, that'll be fun for finding sign in. There's a few reasons, part of the dark, so we have a history there, and message in some photographs, but naturally designed, so this add committee would be per direction that way for the inside need. So, update for night, pause there, have a comment, or any comment?
Anybody have questions? What if the elements played aces?
So if the elements had, I'll spring the question. So if, so far, we've found zero standards in the park, and we've been there, done times, designed with the park, we haven't won yet. If we go to the energy, they drop bucks, have to be individual, you know, in mobile, and it could fall the bucket. And we'll hope that, oh, there's that other, many elements out there somewhere, surfing across. You know, and he really, he was very into being engaged, and he's pretty focused on the environment, things, does lines with the coastal commission and the mother space, can be very helpful, or help, or finger us, yeah.
You said you had a grant already left?
Yes, we have four hundred thousand dollar grant for any side park, which is with the one eight million, and we have two four million dollar grants with every original park. And actually have a seven hundred eighty dollar grant for the park, and so it was all experience twenty eight, so we have to get them built and done, I guess we have years. That's plenty feeble, but yeah, I have three years to use those grants, finger us, but I think.
That was my question, like, there, we have time, we should have done these with the grants.
Yeah, so we're still a tiny eyes, although obvious ones, we won't use those, S P, can never know, but so. Says it for these. They are there, yeah.
Just ask is if they're delayed for a park, and there's seven hundred eighty thousand dollar grant for a park.
The park, park.
I'm saying, if there's a lead, you can't use that for that part, or another part.
Oh, it's that called River Park A D parking lot, I sent for it. Good though, good.
I don't want to lose it, I don't want to lose it, I mean, there's, if we delay and find, if they do fund those first, I don't want to lose the grant.
Understood, yeah.
And there's a possibility for grant one, how could you find out further? That's what I'm trying to say, but.
We've, we've had for a few grants, not always successful, but typically, truly, we meet with grant writers, I think it's a month, and we've asked to look for park grants. It's a visit bathroom grants for store parks, so we're having conversations, and two big grants come for parks, next, I think three.
It's difficult to believe that they're not specific grant veterans kind of thing, because there's always wanting to, you know, for historical and trends.
Sure, we can ask.
Civic for historical veterans, I mean, there's always something.
Yeah, you can ask for this part, it's good. On that, we have seen the asset and finding, we've asked, like, a leading type of grants.
Yeah, because they were just looking for, for ramps, or the, for hearts, or the river, the river part, is there going to be lighting out there, do we need to buy progress up there? Those are, so, I mean, are we able to progress for different sections that are added on afterwards, or do we need to buy progress of those?
So really, the light are gonna have, there'll be some on a lane, and some are on a line, and to see us cost in it, because those ones are getting finals, and we're trying to figure out how to make them out. If they don't get that million grand E P A, so the answer is, I don't know if lens included yet in river regional, but we have six million dollars to use, so, yeah, far goes.
And would that be more considered, I mean, if we're considering solar, go solar air, because that would be.
Yeah, right, because there's some choose, it's homeless and riverbed and what, they wanted the hard wire lighting, did have a conversation. So they, since the police are drying down, there's no light nearby, they, even though the satellites should work, they right now said we want hard wire, the old system. As vets, there's a lot of, I don't know, call it, bill of lighting, the neighborhood, and the street, things like, so that dark, where it would be, which black, yeah, the lean was, if there's bad outcome, things, so. But all good questions.
Is there any other questions? Is there any comments you'd want to ask?
Would like a public, pretty much, I have no comment, change or views.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so are you giving a way to share an announcement, there's a matter of, need to speak to, any creature, I know, since, I'll start the data, Mr.?
Uh, just as far as, uh, connect with interest, as far as.
Want to turn your, you don't think they care you?
And my voice is kind of, I'm commencing now, but our land is goes in the life corridor, we are a property on the Geland, inside the other orange, that's a landowner for the life corridor, it has been considered to be constructed for, I want one to get the operation for connectivity for wildlife. So it will enable wildlife to, the two enroaches, to travel free.
How much room do they need? How much room are you asking for?
This is kind of a mountain range, sail, seat water. Connectivity, because the major, major, um, parent, the thing that being here, mountain lands, scum, everything, a tri crossroad, and even holes, thing like that, it's down at nine, of prayer, that would get, you don't care about car.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's going on, uh, all over, it's, uh, we're working, we identified about, I believe, a thousand acres of habitat potential had for regular fog, tired element, sleet in South County, down by the technicals. And so we're working to date the Amazonite that uh, took it north of allister. So you need mediation sites. We talked to.
I'm in France. Move them along.
Anyway.
Okay. Do you have anything?
No, Mr.
So I have anything. Well, just being a spa meeting, we can, the lighting. So we'll back out later. Any sure item that you two place on future items? The only item I think want to add is if you have any anything you'd like add of any issues you'd like to onto the attic for us, any groups you'd like to, because you all been around a little bit longer than I have about different sort of been air that could assist with a, with the trail, if you know, and can be really helpful. Do you have any groups you know that could be assisting us? Maybe shade it. So under that, maybe same up with, if you can let us know. As many, one group and then we can check. Yeah. So, right. And there was volunteers last, so we're going to put. So yeah, if you have any groups you know that can maybe assist with the trail. Just need history, people been in histories. Wonderful. Okay. So with that said, that's all that I have. So I need a motion to adjourn. And I need. Order. Yeah, me opposed. Me adjourned at sixteen.